I really challenge you to think about that. Because that's what you have coming and you maybe not seen it. But there's a lot of anger in that area. And you need to really proactively talk to those folks. Because they're very upset. Thank you.
Thank you.[21.39][21.39](Applause). Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Martin Tui. I'm a resident in the proposed TIF district. I have perhaps a long view because I, as some of you know, Mr. Ray, Mr. Maher, I was involved 10 years ago when there were controversies about the two other TIF districts that went through the South Main Street and the North Main Street. And at the time, I heard a lot of these same presentations, although not perhaps as polished as tonight from Ellers and Associates, about how things were going to increase, how this was going to lead to development, how this was going to lead to growth, and this was going to benefit us as taxpayers. Am I correct? Mr. Ray, you're the, involved with the Joint Review Board, so I'll pose the question to you. Mr. Hanson still owns a vast majority of the property along South Street, am I correct? And he's going forward, he's trying to work with the village for a development?
Yes.
Okay. How many stories is the proposed building that he wants to build there along South Street on the vacant land?
I'll defer to plan, I believe it's five.
Okay, so he wants to build a five-story building there. Am I correct that it's now, originally it was, 10 years ago, with all the really beautiful drawings, it was proposed to be high-end condominiums for people who were going to move out from the city. What's the current status of that building there, which is going to be connected to the sewer, the stormwater runoff? Is it going to be high-end condos or is it going to be rental apartments?
It would be apartments to be converted to condos.
Okay. Am I correct that, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past eight years, I saw a business that was thriving, a small breakfast restaurant that was there, I saw houses, I saw all of that go for a vacant land. And then, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that Mr. Hanson hasn't been able to build his building in the past eight years since 2008 because he couldn't get financing for it.
Like many others, the victims of the recession, it certainly delayed his project and changed his project as the market changed.
Right. Well, I mean, I guess my question is, I can get financing for something, and I, here's a fact, I pulled this up this evening. Mr. Hanson, for his total assessed value for that South Street area that's been a vacant lot for eight years, the assessed value according to the Cook County Assessors' Office is $7,400. In 2014, he paid $3,101 in property taxes. I'm paying twice that amount, and my assessed value on my little bungalow there in the corner is twice the amount of the assessed value that he has for that entire South Street area. So I guess I pose this to Mr. Ray, because I know you and I have talked about this over the years. Why, what is the incentive for me, in paying twice the amount of taxes as Mr. Hanson, to pay any sort of taxes for anything, to have stormwater runoff built so that he can actually build a building that's then going to just bring renters to my neighborhood rather than homeowners?
The issue, the issue of the last, the last four speakers run to something that's not just Tinley Park, and let's be straightforward, but recognize it. There's something in taxation called confiscatory tax. And one of the gentlemen spoke to it without noticing. Confiscatory tax is when your annual tax bill is higher than your mortgage. That means you never own your home. That's exactly what's happening. And what you're saying to us, and I believe everyone up here is hearing it, is this can't go on. The middle class is, is at risk. And I'm not trying to cover this up, in fact, just the reverse. So what the gentlemen here are trying to do, and I'm glad you're here to speak to it, what they're trying to do is try to reverse that. How do you reverse it when you have one of the metropolitan areas in the country that has the greatest exit? How do you reverse it when you have a state that hasn't balanced its own budget, must pass one? Putting the schools, by the way, putting the schools and the payment of their teachers at risk. There isn't an easy way to do this. If we were talking, because I was here, I came with the land grant. If we, if we were talking 1980, you'd be here excited. Because we would show you what we're going to do, and it worked. We're still trying, but I've got to tell you that there's no happiness, not just with the good folks that are here, but any of the suburban communities of this county and our neighboring metropolitan, let me put it that way. There's no happiness here. There is no guarantee that what's being proposed will happen. And are we going to spend a few thousand dollars putting in sewers or more than that? Sure. Should it have come from some other fund? Sure, if we had it. But let's not forget one thing. And by the way, there's no reason you should know this. I mean, this is the kind of stuff to put you to sleep. But remember what? This town was built in a floodplain 120 years ago. We've taken more property out of that floodplain and increased the value of that, those homes than almost any community around here, and it's cost us tens of millions of dollars. And we've done it out of current revenue with no debt financing. Now, we've done that. Very few towns, just take, even our good neighbors, I don't want to pick on them, but go to some neighboring towns during that floodtime. But you know what? I can give this speech all night long, and your honest reply is going to be, "So what did you do for me lately?"
No, actually, my honest reply is, "Why don't you answer my question?"
Well, go ahead and ask it again.
My question is, why, over the past 10 years, when I've seen disinvestment that's been encouraged by people in the village government playing footsies with people like Tian and Fuentes and Hanson? And I've seen that the homeowners in this area were the ones who weathered for a long time all of the, all the foreclosures, while everything out in the speculative areas had all the marks of foreclosure on Zillow. Why should I be paying twice the amount of a real estate developer each year for the past eight years, and now my tax money is going to go to pay for storm sewers because he made a bad investment? And 10 years ago, I said that there was a problem with water, that there's a high water table in that area. And now we're paying again for him. How, and then we're, he's probably getting a HUD grant to build this thing. How many times over do we have to pay double? So I mean, I guess I'm asking you, what is the incentive to me, because I'm open to that, to pay twice as much as him and then have him get money from me?
Actually, I did answer it, but let me go back. The short answer to your question is you shouldn't. There's no question about that, in my mind at least. But that's not fair. My long answer, which you, you know, because I'm given to long answers.
I heard your long answer.
My long answer was an explanation of what we've done and when it's worked, and we're still trying it, and it might not because of the economy. That was my answer. Maybe that was too circumspect, but I know you grabbed it because I hear you thinking straight down the track. May I suggest that if your time allows, that you come in and let us look at this site with our planning staff, if that's all right with the mayor?
Sir.
And let us see what you're proposing and how we can get there? Because you have an, by the way, you have an onsite personal understanding better than we do. Ours tends to be grouped together in larger groups of numbers.
I think that the opportunity was lost 10 years ago, frankly. I think what really should happen is Mr. Hanson should, for his company, he should declare bankruptcy. He should sell the land at a loss, take his losses, just like so many other people do, just like ordinary homeowners do when they reach too far. And then somebody else will buy it at a loss and make something of it with entrepreneurial skills, not this constant, "Let's create a TIF, let's do this." So, that's what I would suggest.
Thank you.[581.16][581.16](Applause).
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
A little different, we're not talking Vegas tonight, are we?
Not yet.
Not yet, no, I'll be gone by then. No, I just have a few questions to follow up on the TIF. I was doing some research today on the South TIF. Can anybody give me, how much is the TIF for the South TIF? The main South District?
I defer to Brad.
What do you mean, what?
What's the TIF amount? 165 million?
What is, are you talking about the figures in the redevelopment plan and project?
Right, Pandoit is 81.5.
If that's the figure, I don't, I don't remember what those figures are off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Because when I went out there, it looked like there was a set one for the first South District was 72.5. Then they did an expansion?
Correct.
And that went up to 165 million.
Okay.
And then we got north at 70 million.
Yeah.
Okay, so right now, taxpayers are already on the hook for 235 million.
Again, as I explained earlier, that is not, those are not commitments to spend. Those are a guide, those are a guide.
No, I'm saying, there's nothing here showing us what has been spent on it. I'm going by what's been approved.
That's exactly, those, those figures you're referencing are the same as the 81 and a half million dollars that is proposed for this TIF. It is a guide over a 23-year period for expenditures within the allowable categories. It is, it is still predicated on what TIF revenues are generated within the TIF. That is the ultimate cap on what can be spent.
Right, and right now, I'm not seeing any development on the
That's right.
South or north TIF. So you need Pandoit's TIF to throw in another 81?
No.
Wait, yes you do, because you're going to redirect the money to it.
No.
So you need the, where are you going to put, where are you going to put all the water for South and North?
North is, North is on its own. The proposed pond is going to provide compensatory storage for developments in the Main Street South TIF.
So you need it.
So we need it.
So, in total, in our little area, you're putting the taxpayers on the hooks, potentially. We haven't seen any graphs of where the money is, what you've already asked for. I thought that would have been kind of nice to show for us trying to understand what a Pandoit TIF is, use some of the TIFs that we already have, give us some explanations. So you're willing to put us on the hook for 307 million dollars of potential profits?
No, it's not profits, it's, it's
Well, taxing, to lower the
It's the spend, it's, it's, it's creating, again, I don't want to use the term budget because it is, it is not a budget, but it's, it's an expenditure limit for, within the allowable categories of expenditure under the TIF statutes.
And maybe Brad, I can jump in. What we're doing in this TIF is actually similar to what I've seen in other towns, is that you have to, by law, basically say, here's the maximum amount, and you can't ever spend more than that. But I think as Brad was saying, it's really going to be determined by the amount of revenue that can be generated. So typically, you'll see these budgets at that high amount, because that's what the law says, is you've got to basically say, here's the maximum you can ever spend. But it's not the same as like our village budget where we actually try to estimate what we're actually going to spend.
Right.
I know that's confusing, but it is, it's kind, we have to do it to be in compliance with state law.
And again, it's, it
Right, but it still shows that
If you wanted to put it in the framework of a budget, which again, that's not the proper terminology, it's covering a 23-year period. So it's not what I'm going to spend next year or the year after that, it's
But you're going to still freeze us for 23 years.
Yes.
And if my, some miracle
The assessed value.
You call it assessed value.
Right, assessed value, right. I just don't see the benefit of this particular TIF. Because what was it? You potentially could give 52 million for the Pandoit, to Pandoit, for the cleanup, the remediation, buying the land. I'm going by, you could, because you keep throwing out, well, it's not spent yet. Well, it's out there, so it looks like you have it to spend. So you have 52 million for remediation and buying the land?
Where's the 52 million coming from? I'm not clear. I thought it was 15.
I'm sorry?
I thought it was 15 that was discussed earlier.
I don't have, what was the 46.5? Does anybody remember?
There are several different categories, again, tied to what are the allowable expenditures, qualified expenditures within a TIF.
I think it was four and five on the list. Leads, so that's to me cleanup, remediation. It was 46.5.
Maureen, do you have, do you have the information with you at all?
Do you have it right here?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have it here.
I read out of ink, I had to go and move.
I'm sorry?
It was number four, four and five.
$10 million. Remediation. Should we just go down? Everything flying around right now. Land. Two. Okay. Nice. Love teamwork.
To clarify once again, as Brad
Yeah, number five was 36.5 million. Cost of construction or public works or improvements, including any direct or indirect costs pertaining to the Green Globes or LEED certification, construction elements or construction elements. For that amount of money, to me, that means remediation. What is it, what was the estimate for, okay, on an estimate? What was 36.5 million estimate for on a Pandoit property?
It is, it is not, it is not tied to any specific property in the TIF. That is for the TIF in its entirety, the entire purple area is, and again, over a 23-year period. And it's, yes.
I think, is a question more, where do these numbers come from? And Maureen can make, maybe you can address.
Okay, that, there, as we've said, there's 14 different categories in this plan. The 36,500 is specifically, that is the maximum that can be spent within this plan for public works improvements. So those are public improvements, such as the stormwater
Water lines.
The water and sewer lines that we're talking about. That would be, that's that category. You can move some funds between light items, but again, this 81.5 that you're looking at, it's, it's a maximum. It just means you cannot spend any more than that in the TIF. But the chances that you're actually going to accrue that much in revenues, you're probably, if you make a third of that, you're going to be lucky. We set the numbers high, because again, we're talking about 23 years. You don't know what will happen over 23 years. You want to give yourself some flexibility to be able to make adjustments and spend in the categories that you need. But you're probably not likely ever to reach that amount.
Well, would I just turn around and see that you doubled up the South TIF? So they maxed out at 70, and then you had to go in and get some more?
No, 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 no.
No.
No, 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 no. That's, again, there's, again, there's 14, 14 categories of expenditure that are listed in the Main Street South TIF, Main Street North TIF, Oak Park Avenue TIF, Mental Health Center TIF.
Right.
All of those have these same 14 categories. And that is for, again, setting a maximum that can be spent on those types of improvements over the 23-year period. It doesn't commit to anything being spent.
What you have to look at is your actual annual reports and see what the revenues are for those TIFs.
And I think, the gentleman earlier asked about where you can find TIF information. I will say that our annual TIF reports are available on our website. They are also available on the Illinois Comptroller's website through the Comptroller's Warehouse. As far as other TIF information, the Cook County Treasurer, under the section, oh, I'm sorry, not Cook County Treasurer, Cook County Clerk, under the Real Estate Tax Services area, has extensive reports on TIF information for all of the TIFs within Cook County.
And will one of those sites, and I'll email you, give us what you've already allotted on all these other TIFs and what was spent and how it was spent?
Yes, the annual, the annual reports absolutely report what is being spent, what has been spent in the, in the prior fiscal year, as well as cumulatively.
And I don't have the FOIA there?
It's, it's on the website.
I couldn't find it on the website, but will you be able to walk me through about where it's at?
If you want to call, I would gladly
You know where it's at? Okay.
I will gladly walk you through it if you'd like.
Okay, and then one other just question. I know part of determining blight, and you're not going to take down, it's like 10 or less homes, right? 10 or less homes in some of these streets, that's a lot of property. Especially if you talk about possibly along, I mean
There's no, there's no intention of taking down any homes right now.
And it, so the 3.5 is strictly to give to ABC? Here you go? Go to, go to Will County? You're saying no, well then what's it for?
There's, again, what you're looking at is, is the part of the redevelopment plan and project. There is nothing that the board has committed to giving to anyone.
But you want us to commit the trust in you of 81, basically 82 million? That you're going to be able to fiduciary handle it, you're going to be accountable and handle it correctly? I haven't seen much accountability or transparency. So I am, I am concerned. I'm not opposed to the TIF. I'm opposed to the structure of it. And Pandoit has billions that they can clean up their own dam, or, excuse me, their own property.
Just, if there's agreements with ABC or other incentive agreements with Pandoit, that is something that would come back to the board, that they would have to approve. So obviously at a public meeting.
Is it part of it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's got to be public, yeah. Like I said, I was shocked when I saw that the South TIF went from 70, thanks, to 165 million. I hope you all were aware of that and are watching what's really happening with our future tax dollars, because
Again, again
If the money is not made up, other taxing bodies have to make up the difference.
No.
Yes.
Those, those figures, again, are the, are part of the redevelopment plan and project. And each, each TIF district has its own set of, of public improvements and other things that potentially can happen within those boundaries. And so those numbers are different for each TIF. They are not necessarily cumulatively, now we've, we've increased it, we've increased it. It's only for within that TIF.
We're frozen.
And the needs that are there.
Tax base goes up in our area, we're frozen. We can't, we have no, we're protected, right? We're frozen. But the taxes are going to go up, and the taxes have to come up from someplace, it's going to come from the other side at Tinley. I mean, I spent hours doing training and doing videos and anything I could get my hands on TIFs. And you know where I got most of it from? David Orr.
Again, I think, again, I said, a lot of, there's a lot of TIF information
The key numbers are the ones that are in the TIF reports. I think, again, I think as Maureen explained, those numbers at the 81 million, that's, that's going to be really nowhere near what we spent, we have to put it that way by state law. And again, I
You can't do a 23 million dollar TIF?
No, basically, because you basically have to put a maximum that you would expect to spend.
Well, how could South Street, which has got a lot more potential for growth and development, only get 70? But our area, who has no future growth, commercialize except for the Pandoit, get 81? See the disparity?
Well, you've also, you're also looking at the Main Street North TIF, which, again, Main Street North and Main Street South originally had comparable figures in that redevelopment plan and project, were created in 2003. We're in 2016, and with inflation, numbers will be greater today for a redevelopment plan and project, even if you've got the same, same projects
Our taxes go up, our values go down.
Than what you had in 2003.
I don't see where this is going to increase my home value at all, at all. But thank you, we'll have further discussions.
Thank you.[1426.03][1426.03](Applause).
Hi, I'll be a little shorter. First, just a general question, can a TIF be extended after this 23-year period?
Yes, a TIF can be extended beyond the 23 years. However, it takes letters of agreement from the school districts, as well as it takes state legislative approval.
Okay, okay.
So it's, it's not an easy process.
Yeah, no, I was just, just about that question. Personally, I'll
I'm glad, I'm glad you asked the question, got it out on the table. You know, we're not hiding anything here.
No.
But understand that to get a TIF extended is a very difficult process. It doesn't happen every day.
And so something I want to say is that I, I'm worried about how this, how this exactly affects school funding. As we all know, downstate's a little more contentious as far as the budget, budget's not been passed. I'm kind of worried about if the, if the state is threatening to cut off school funding, and that schools have to then therefore increase more of their own funding locally, if there's freezing of the funding going towards the schools, how will that affect them? And I guess I just kind of want to end it saying that I know that, you know, Clerk Ray mentioned that he was a part of some, you know, board meeting of different representatives from each group. But I personally talked to people within the school district who said that, you know, quote, "We hate TIFs." So necessarily that everyone's in such a favor of it, and I don't think that that's exactly true. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Maybe one thing that you can do to make it easy for us, so this proposed TIF, you're talking about websites and all these reports and information, so if we want to understand what's really happening with our money, we have to go dig through the website and find it ourselves and spend untold hours.
You're more than welcome to stop by the village treasurer's office and
Can I propose something? Can I propose that? In a future village meeting, that somebody provide a report on all the TIFs that just simplify it. Here's what the cap values were, here's what we're actually tracking, here's what we're actually spending, so that we can see what's really happening.
We could do, we could actually do a special
Yeah.
Meeting, you know, and maybe do it in one of the neighborhoods
Make it easy, so I don't have to
Or something, maybe do it at Central Junior and give you that information.
But make it easy, or, or, you know, you've sent out the village bulletin, you know, because South Street, you know, how's that working for you? North Street, how's that working for you? And I'm not trying to be snide, but, 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 you know, past is an indicator of future possibly on these, to see, you know, what the, what's the actual potential might be.
True.
And when you talk about, well, the 81 million, that's never really going to happen, even the advisor says that. So that's for state filing, you know, for legal things. Can you provide a, kind of, a realistic estimate of what you think, so that we know how much
Well, again, I don't, I don't think to project on a realistic estimate of what those expenditures will be over a 23-year period, I don't think that that's
Yeah, you just want me to do this, you know, and take as much as you want.
Well
And I don't want that. I mean, that's not how I
And I disagree, that's not quite how it works, but, okay.
It seems like that's
Well, we can do a TIF, we can do a TIF 101, which might be the way to do this, Brad, in a separate, you know, we can do it in the neighborhood.
But show how the TIFs are actually
Do a TIF 101 and take some pictures and show you what your TIF dollars have been spent on. Because, you know, you don't have to look far. You don't have to, you know, you can look at a convention center, you can look at, you know, Oak Park Avenue, you can look at all those things where your TIF dollars have been put to work.
But just give us a state of the union of TIFs
Sure.
So that we can figure out if this TIF is really
We'd love to do that.
And I'll say, and I would, I would like to throw in here, that if you go on the village's website, there are several places, several ways
You're telling me to go pound sand, and I really don't like
I'm sorry?
I would like, I would like simple answers.
Well, I'm just saying, there are several ways that you can get to the information about TIF. The easiest way is to go to the Open Government page
No, the easiest way is to provide a simple report in the next village report.
There's, you can, there's plenty of information about the TIF, you can click it through directly from the Open Government page, and
And I find
And you will also
And I find these numbers that I've been talking about, and you tell me that, well, those aren't the real numbers.
You will also find information about the TIFs presented in every one of our annual budgets.
Okay, we'll do 101. I think you might enjoy that.
And we'll gladly, we'll gladly put together a presentation.
And at the March TIF meeting, you know, and I think we have people in the audience who are in the TIF district, Mr. Mertens demurred on my request of, well, what do the people feel about this TIF? So we have people in the room, if you're in the area, how many of you are for the TIF? How many of you oppose the TIF? So at least, we took a little straw poll.
Thank you.[1770.82][1770.82](Applause). Yes, ma'am.
I'm a long-term resident, and I work in Tinley Park, have been here probably longer than some people have been alive. But I have one suggestion as an interested observer and one question, which is directed to counsel for the village. My suggestion is, and I don't know if this can be accomplished by a TIF. There seems to be, because of the lack of trustworthiness or perceived lack of trust to the board, an objection to giving sort of a wholesale, here's a blank check and assurances, well, we'll never hit that amount. Is it possible to have an approval for the TIF, but actually to put in the approval, if the board decides to adopt it, a condition that requires each and every incremental spend or project to therefore be subject to approval? I know that's been bandied about, but I'm saying fake it into the.
That's absolutely, that's absolutely part of the process. Every project that will get approved, whether it's an agreement for an incentive, will have to come before the board and be presented.
I, I heard that.
If it's, if it's a, if it's a construction project, such as building the pond, it will come before the board to approve that contract to build that project.
Let council.
I, I heard that, but it would be nice if it would be absolutely part of the approval itself rather than saying, we, we vote yes, but we vote, vote yes, subject to these procedures that will require each such project to have its own individual board approval.
I'd have to, I'd have to look at that to see if that would be something that would go in the approval resolution. But as Brad has stated, Brad's correct, just, just so we understand. The fact that it's TIF dollars or anything like that doesn't excuse the village, the village's requirements to competitively bid and do all the things that the village has to do when they spend, you know, general fund monies, for example. So just, just the fact that it's TIF dollars, as Brad has been mentioning, all of those projects will come here. I work with the TIF council, we'll talk about that, but that is in multiple laws. In village code, in state law, in bidding laws. There's, there's many laws that which this village has to require when they spend money. And the fact that it becomes TIF money or that it's in a TIF does not excuse those requirements.
Okay, well, again, it was my suggestion to sort of recite at least those procedures. It may give some public assurance. My question, and again, I, I really understand the point. I, I think it makes sense to put some infrastructure and to try to deal with some of these issues and hopefully spur development as it's been successful in the past. But I have to say, as just an interested observer, I don't have, I don't live in that area. I knew nothing about it before coming to the meeting tonight. I'm really surprised at the idea that public funding would be supporting the Panduit demolition. That doesn't seem legal to me. Has there been precedent that would allow the funding by taxpayers of private enterprise for such a purpose?
There's a, there's a specific list in the TIF statute and it's quite specific on what TIF dollars can be spent on. And yes, that, one of those is reimbursement to private developers for doing certain things. Demolition, I believe, is one of them. I don't have it in front of me, but I, I'm 99.9% certain it's one of them. I don't have the statute in front of me, but yes. So there is precedent and it is allowable by law.
Well, I guess as a carrot to a, in a private enterprise, you know, that makes some sense. But we also have the stick of condemnation proceedings and whatnot or fines. It would be appropriately assessed if someone is not maintaining the property and would allow vermin or safety issues to exist on their property. And, and if that's part of the leverage that you're seeking, I would encourage you as good negotiators with Panduit for property that may be needed for this flood area to keep in mind that there's a stick that could be used as well as the carrot. Because I don't think the carrot is really legally appropriate myself, but I'll trust your judgment on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just to understand one thing about TIFs. It's not only, it's the freezing of the taxes, right? That Panduit is going to get the benefit, correct?
The pool of dollars that are available to be spent are the increase in taxes generated. Not what's already in place, but any increase in taxes generated due to the TIF. So for instance, if we add a new building there and it generates an extra $100 a year, that $100 a year is available to the TIF with the base being in place.
But does Panduit's taxes go up each year or are they frozen?
No, they will go up.
They still pay the same amount?
Same thing you guys are subject to.
Okay, so the only benefit is that we would be helped funding their, their work that they need to do?
Public, primarily public improvement.
Instead of going back to the town or to pay for our services, we would be paying for Panduit's?
Well, it's a, it, it's like a lot of other things. When an auto dealer comes to us and says they're going to expand their facility, we say, well, we'll share the benefits of that. That's kind of what this is, where you're only making a commitment to the additional increment based on those improvements to land that are being made.
So if they built a bigger building and were able to make, produce more products, they're going to make more money?
Well, more money and they would in theory be paying more taxes because they built a new building and, yes.
Okay. How much do they pay now? What's their property tax bill?
I don't know. I don't have that, I don't have that information handy. I've got it back. I could have, I could come up with it back at the office, but I don't have it handy.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Are they, are, is Panduit getting a tax break already from us?
No, they are not.
No tax breaks?
Well, they may have, they may have filed appeals with the assessor's office to value the property lower because the building is unoccupied, but that is not an incentive that the village has anything to do with.
Okay. Is this part of the negotiation? Is this part of your negotiation with them, this TIF? To, to get this TIF in place for them?
I'm sorry? No.
Is this part of the negotiation for them to, to, to stay here? The only thing I want to say is this, is I work for a multimillion dollar organization and I'm appalled at the taxes we pay. Because I know that we're not paying our share. Bottom line is, for all of us, we wouldn't be here if I'm not getting to a point that I have to move out of this town. And that's where I am. I can't retire here. We need to do something. You guys need to do something for us to lower our taxes. If you're telling me that all of you have looked at this and you feel like this is truly the best thing for us, that you're going to take care of us, because that's why you're there, I'm sure, then vote for it. But please, every time I come to one of these meetings and I, I hear everybody stand up and they go against things and two seconds later you vote and it's not even a blip, you just vote yes anyway. Please, please, as the earlier man said, I've raised my family here. I want to stay in this town. And I'm to a point I can't. So please, I should not be paying more in my tax bill than I ever paid on my property and, and my mortgage. It shouldn't be that way and it's there. So I'm asking you to please do your diligence, you're all educated people, to make sure we're doing the right thing. Because we have made a lot of mistakes, a lot of mistakes that thank God, some people stood up and made us aware and stopped it. Because you made some mistakes and you know it, please do the right thing.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
You said that part of this TIF district is to pay for a storm sewer system to develop downtown Tinley. But it says nothing about the residential area. Where on my block, in the last two years, I've had three water main leaks, two directly in front of my house. As a result, the street is lower so that when the water does rain and it comes off the street, it comes directly into my driveway, which has caused it to deteriorate. I've also had a broken water main for six months, which was on the list to be fixed, even though my husband would call every month and ask about it. I don't see where there's any infrastructure improvement in the purple area where the residents live. You talk about developing, but you say nothing about how it's going to help the residential areas in that district. The water right now in my, on my street does not go into the sewer system. It goes onto people's property.
That's, that's in fact part of the $36 million bucket. Item, item in the redevelopment plan and project is to provide for stormwater improvements in that residential area that's included in the TIF.
Well, I don't see anything on the map that shows that. In fact, you send out a thing that says, please don't fill in your swales. And across the street, the village last summer not only filled in the swale, they got better sod than I did when the water main leaks. So I don't know how that one happened because that's, I've lived in this village for over 35 years. That was there for 35 years. And all of a sudden, it's gone. So I don't see anything that's going to benefit me right now. You can say you're going to put in $36 million.
The only, the only project that is currently on, in, in the plan is, is the pond. The other projects are yet, are being looked at and have, are yet to be developed.
Well, I would hope that would help the flooding in our area.
We, we.
Because it doesn't take much rain to flood it.
We, we recognize that there's, there are issues in that area and that is part of why it's included in the TIF. Is, is the TIF, potentially gives us more funding options to be able to address those issues.
If you'd be kind enough to give your address to our staff over here on my right, I'd like them to take a look at your particular situation and see what's going on, okay? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, there's an issue here that has not been addressed. I am a former employee of Panduit. And when it came to the rumor around the building and in town was that there's a big environmental issue on that property. Panduit doesn't want to touch it because it's too expensive. Is there anyone here that has looked at it or can address this issue?
I don't, I'm not familiar with that specific.
Shouldn't you look into that before you go forward? Because environmental issues can be very, very costly.
Absolutely.
And I would like to tell the people of the audience, all of us have had water issues. We need that addressed and not, maybe we should all gather together, get a lawyer and push the village to fix it. So I've lived here 37 years. And nobody, I've called the water department, had them come through. Oh, you know, someday it'll get fixed. It's beyond time. I mean, we can get litigation too at Forcher Hand.
Sure. Thank you.
This lady's lived here for 37 years. She's new in town. Anyway, a couple, a couple of things. As far as the sewer, that Maureen said that they need to have to develop South Street. And in fact, they can actually put on-site water reclamation, correct? Can they put on-site?
They could put retention on-site, yes.
And the reason they don't want to do it is?
Well, the, the current MWRD requirements would, would require dedication, I believe, Chris. Is it a third of the site?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. About one-third of the properties would be utilized for stormwater management within.
So they're going to utilize the whole property from the tip of South Street, where the donut factory used to be, all the way to the parking lots now? That's going to be all apartments?
Part of the redevelopment, correct.
Okay, it's going to be a part, is this going to be an apartment that's similar to the apartment on 143rd and La Grange? Where they have the indoor, if, it's kind of like an arena where you have the swimming pools inside and the open spaces on the inside of the apartments? Is that the sort of thing that they're proposing?
They don't have an inner.
Is there any green space at all?
We haven't seen the plans, the final plans yet. That's still a work in progress.
Okay, because I spoke with Mike Mertens, he's gone. He, he said it's going to be exactly like that. I suppose that was misinformation. Okay, on the Tinley Park thing, Maureen said that summer money is going to go to Tinley Park. I believe it's to get some flooding issues off of the ball fields? Is, is there going to be a sewer that goes into Tinley Park to free up some flooding issues? The high school, Tinley Park High School?
Is it, is it currently part of the, of the?
Yeah.
Was it spoke about at all? It's, again, it's, within the area of the TIF, it is something that is possible? There is no plan currently in place to do, to address that?
Okay, because I stopped at District 228 today just to confirm that they did get the okay to issue $50 million in bonds to spend any way that they want. And I asked them, is this something that they could spend it on? And they said, well, we don't have no firm plans either. So it's High School District 228 just recently got confirmation that they can issue $50 million bonds. And I was hoping that possibly you knew of it and we don't try to fix something that they're going to try to fix.
We certainly wouldn't overlap.
Nothing like that. Overlap, okay?
We would definitely coordinate. I'm not, I'm not familiar with the, the information.
Certainly would talk to them before.
Any sewer systems, like the green sewer system where it says, Old Forest, that's going to be all new?
Correct.
Okay, is it necessary to come all the way down 175th and Ridgeland? Or can you just go down Old Forest, they haven't went down, or just one way?
That would be, that would be another future, future project of the coming, coming along 175th Street. And that would be, that would be towards addressing the other, the other needs.
Okay, first, so this is all for South Street, just to get the water off of South Street? So they can maximize the property?
Actually, it's for the entire, it's the entire legacy district.
South Street, North Street and Old Central?
It's, it's actually all of the numbered sites that you see up there on the drawing.
I got you. Okay, okay. And there's no way we can put any retention pond on North Street, South Street to accommodate the other numbers? In other words, not pipe it all the way down to Panduit?
Sure, no, you, actually you could. It's just really a question of how can you maximize utilization of the land? Really, when you, you think about it, you know, the discussion that you hear here is concern on the expenditure side. What's our potential revenue side? With no revenue, there's no expenditures. So I mean, we need to get an increase in the EAV out there to generate the $81 million that we're talking about. If we don't have redevelopment, we have no funding. So that's part of the issue that we, we want to keep in mind. And so, you know, part of that is you also want to then maximize what the development can do so it maximizes the amount to invest back in infrastructure improvement.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Exactly what was the tax incentive given to Panduit when they moved over to 80th Avenue?
There were a series of tax breaks, I believe. And understand, that is the only Class A building on I-80. There were a number of, there were property tax breaks.
Probably centered around property tax. There were some.
Some sales tax in terms of construction material.
Sales tax was a separate arrangement, but the, but the primary agreement related to the headquarters, the structure itself, was property tax-based, was the village. I believe the school districts, Will County was, was also involved. It was multi, multi jurisdictions involved in providing an economic, property tax adjustment for, for the, for the, for the, for the development.
How long does the, is that a 10-year?
That is a 20-year arrangement.
20-year, okay.
For some of the other governmental agencies, I believe it's less, but ours, our commitment is a 20-year commitment.
And, and what was the incentive? What, what's the percentage?
It's a, it's, it's providing up to a, a tax break on their property taxes that they pay to the village of Tinley Park only. There's a maximum, I believe, it's, it's $100,000 for I think the first 10 years and I think it's $120,000 for the next 10 years with a cap of $20 million.
Okay, and in what percentage is that $100,000 of their, of their tax?
No, it is, it is no more than 50% of what they, what the tax bill would have been calculated for the village of Tinley Park.
Okay, so 50%. They got a 50% rebate?
But it's capped. It's capped.
Right.
So it's, it's no more than 50%.
Okay.
And I, and I will say that it, it has hit the caps each year, so they are getting less than 50%.
Okay. And was there anything else tied to that? I thought you said something about that no employment change?
I'm sorry? Again, part of, part of the agreement was, to provide the incentive was for maintaining their world headquarters in Tinley Park. Arguably a little bit bragging rights, but also more so the, keeping the employment in Tinley.
And what did they do six months after?
I'm sorry?
And what did they do six months after that?
That I don't know.
Moved all their manufacturing to Costa Rica?
Yes, but it's, that, but those were not part of the office complex. And I, and I understand they moved their manufacturing.
Right.
And that's, and that's why the building that currently sits empty.
Right. You know, I mean, it, that's just a little bit of a slap back to us personally. That's, that's how I feel. I think it was, Mr. Conley, you said, somebody asked you about contracts? And like normal, they.
And like normal, they would go out to bid? And I believe that would be any work done as far as the TIF is concerned?
Sure.
I think your name is Chris? Is that correct? You on the far right? Could you, what is your last name, sir?
Chris King. Talking to the engineer, I'm sorry.
Sorry. And what company are you with?
Didn't sound like that was an engineering question. Robinson Engineering.
And when was the last time you had to bid on a contract with Tinley Park?
You know, we're a professional service, so it's not a contract service.
But there have been a series of, for instance, when there are federal contracts or state contracts involved, there's a bidding process that does occur.
It's called a qualifications bid, right?
So for all of the engineering work that you do for the village of Tinley Park that equates to approximately $1 million a year, you've never had to bid a contract for?
No, we don't bid professional services.
And do you think that's in our best interest, Mr. Mayor?
I think we're getting a fair value for our services.
But how do you know if it's not bid out?
There are periodic, and this is part of our fiscal policy review that's in finance right now. Part of that policy is going to include rebid of all contracts, rebid of licenses on a periodic basis to address that very concern.
By state law, you can't bid out professional services. You can't actually ask for, you basically have to go and assess them based on their qualifications. You can't allow...
Well, you go for RFQ as opposed to, yeah.
Right, but it's got to be based on qualifications. You can't have a low-bid process for something like an engineer.
Okay. Can I ask, are there any employees with your company that have any relation to this village? Past or present?
Past or present? Yeah, John Zabrocki works for me.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
I have to say, I've been to a number of board meetings, and to compliment these folks, you are the greatest speakers I have ever heard addressing this board with your concerns in many, many months. And I think the board also realizes that. After listening to these folks talk, and I must admit, I haven't gone to all the TIF meetings, but from looking at this one a little bit, and the Main Street North and Main Street South, my understanding is one of the qualifications for this being approved is that there has to be some showing of some kind of deterioration, a decrease in assessed valuation, and basically saying that the neighborhood is going to pot. Well, quite frankly, gentlemen, you of the old guard, that's really an unfortunate testament to you letting it deteriorate and you letting the infrastructure go to pot and things like that.
Well, I would object to that comment because, for instance, one of the areas, including the home you live in, was taken out of a floodplain because of the work that this old guard did to put Settlers Pond in. Just as a hint there in terms of what this board has done, and I'm not going to exclude my current board members, my newer board members, but this village has made, as our clerk has always stated earlier in this meeting, and perhaps you missed it, but we've been very diligent, whether you're talking about Parkside, Barrett's, go back out as far as Rain Tree, and we have been very diligent about pulling stuff out of floodplain areas and trying to manage those as best as we possibly can and as resources permitted.
And I checked, Mr. Mayor, now that you want to start getting a little huffy, with my neighbors in the Barrett subdivision, and they were not in the floodplain until the village did something that put them in the floodplain.
I'll defer to the engineer about that because the village did not do anything. Let's clarify this now.
I'll address that because that's an incorrect statement. Totally incorrect. The village did nothing to put any of the residents in the Barrett's area in the floodplain. What happened is the original Barrett's area...
Let me interrupt you, like the mayor interrupts me. Was Barrett's in the floodplain in 1985?
Yeah, I'll finish the question, and then you'll understand the history behind it. Barrett's has always been in the floodplain. There's a question of whether or not they were in the regulatory floodplain. And when FEMA fixed the maps back in '96, they actually corrected some errors that were in their old maps. And that's what precipitated the village to look at a solution out there. And I think, like the mayor said, we had over 1,000 residents in this community that we were able to get out of the floodplain, something that FEMA did, nothing that the village did. And it saved the residents over half a million dollars a year in flood insurance premiums. That's every year. And we would project that that also increased property values by about $15,000 a year on each one of those homes. Again, not one thing that the village did to put them in the floodplain.
Okay, it's somebody else's fault, Mr. King, but when Barrett's started being built in the mid to late 1960s, those homeowners were not required to buy flood insurance, were they?
That's correct. They were not in the regulatory floodplain.
And then later, they were required to buy flood insurance, correct?
I think the way you want to look at this, in 1960, this is an important fact, there were no flood insurance maps. Not one. Flood insurance program...
You're not answering the question.
The flood insurance, I will, the flood insurance program, which is a federal program, started in 1979. Came long after that was built. So were they in a floodplain? No. Were they in the floodplain when the maps were first created? Maps created by FEMA? They were not. Those maps were always in error. Floodplain is based on the elevation of the land. If the water's going to get as deep as this table, whether it's on a map or it's not on a map, the water's going to get as deep as this table. So it's a question of whether or not those houses would be flooded. Those houses would have been flooded when the maps were changed only because of a regulatory map. And that's what crazed, all those properties have to pay for flood insurance.
It's a fact that when Barrett's homes were sold originally, those homeowners did not have to pay up to $1,000 a year for flood insurance, correct?
Because there wasn't any flood insurance in them.
It's correct. There was not a regulatory floodplain at that time.
And when flood insurance came into being, they still did not automatically have to pay it, correct?
That's correct, because the maps were correct.
And then at some point, that has nothing to do with the village, they were forced to pay $1,000 a month for flood insurance, correct?
That's correct.
And then the village did take action to get them out of the floodplain and by putting in Settlers Pond, it saved them $1,000 because of a large hue and cry to the village from the Barrett's homeowners saying that something had to be done. And I'll admit, something was done. But to get a TIF passed, you have to show deterioration and some other factors. You talk about infrastructure. In this proposed TIF, there are sewers that need to be changed. There are water mains that need to be changed. So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to personally attack me and my neighborhood about one thing...
I didn't attack you or your neighborhood. You attacked me for what this old guard, as you suggest, had never done or not done. And I take exception to that.
Did you change the sewers in this TIF area?
This requirement for these sewers in this area, not unlike your floodplain map issue, has to do with recent regulatory changes that MWRD has imposed upon this government. That's what's happened.
The bottom line is, it's never the village's fault. The other bottom line is, one of the goals of a TIF is to increase the EAV, correct?
Yes, sir.
And when the EAV increases, that means the property tax burden on each of those homeowners increases, correct?
No. The EAV discussion has to do with new, to make it simple, new properties added. So for instance, if you add one parcel